Yeah. Hello, I'd like to call the regular Board of Aldermen meeting for October 11th, 2022 to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord. Come here.
Pledge allegiance.
Good day, United States of America.
To the Republic.
Which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Justice for all.
All right, in lieu of a note taker, I'll, I'll take role tonight. Stowe. King.
Here.
Tar.
Here.
Adamowski.
Here.
Cassetti.
Here.
Jeanetti.
Here.
Not.
Here.
Rivers.
Here.
Yaman.
Here.
Mamon.
Here.
I'm here. De Libro. And Blackwell. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, ten present. Uh, three absent. I declare quorum. Um, see, consideration of previous minutes, we have a motion to approve the minutes that were sent out recently.
So I'll move.
Motion by Cessetti and a second by Mamon, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, motion carries. All right, we'll start with a public session. Just a quick reminder, if anyone wants to speak, uh, please announce your name and address for the public record. Please leave your comments to, uh, three minutes or less. And, uh, as much as we can, we'll try to avoid a Q and A. If we can answer questions on the fly, we will, but, um, you're free to make any statement you'd like. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak tonight?
Yes, I do.
All right, we'll start with, um, says Laura Aruda.
Yes, this is her husband, Joseph Aruda, um, at the Three Pleasant View Terrace in Sonya, Connecticut.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, uh, obviously you guys know me from about two months ago with the, um, the mechanical workup on scenic view. Um, I know you guys issued a summons, uh, about two months ago. Um, it was quiet. He went to court. I don't know what happened there, but it's back to full force there. Once again, I'm asking you guys, please do something here. Um, there's about four, five, six cars in, in his, um, driveway on the tarps. And, uh, I've called the police numerous times. This is going on six years, Dr. Josh. Uh, and you guys know me and like I said, I, I can't believe this is still going. I know I've talked to the chief of police. He has informed me that anybody can work on their car, which is true. This is beyond that. Okay, now they have a race car. The race car came back in there. He's running the business out of there. Uh, I can't sit on my deck once again. I can't sit with my wife by the fire. It, it's just constant with tow trucks, noise, and the car issue. If you guys take a ride up there, you'll see what I'm talking about. I don't know where to turn here.
All right, thank you. Um, I'm not sure if the chief is on yet or if he'll be here tonight. Um.
I've called the, the Lynch, uh, Sergeant Lynch a couple of times, more than a couple of times because he was investigating this. He hasn't gotten back to me.
Um, I'll, I'll check into that myself, but we'll also make sure we check in with them so that we, the board can be informed, um, for any further action.
Uh, that, well, that's what I've been here for the last five years, Dr. Josh, please. I, 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 I know, I know that, uh, nobody was there to, uh, you know, represent me and my neighbors when he went to court.
Yeah.
Uh, obviously, excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I, I, I know he went to court. Of course, he, he says he's working on his own cars. The, the, uh, once again, this is beyond that. That's not working on your own car. This is constant. And, and then the chief tells me anybody can work on the cars until two, three o'clock in the morning. I, I mean, your, your mechanical shops, the sorados and stuff like that, they have an ordinance from nine or whatever, seven to five, to close down Sundays. The, this is, th- this is beyond this. And like I said, i- i- I, I don't know what to do here. I, I, you know what I mean? Uh, me and the neighbors are going to seek counsel here or something because this is wrong. I mean, we all have rights. You, you understand? And, and we have, um, y- y- you know, with the noise, the tow trucks and everything. Uh, on a good Saturday night, Friday night, there's 20 people up there, cars in and out of there. Uh, in a residential area. I, I, I've stated this the last time I talked to you guys. And I know you guys issued the summons and it was quiet. At least I enjoyed my summer. He went to court. And like I said, I don't know what happened there, but the race cars back there, all these little, uh, little compact cars with the mufflers and stuff like that. And this is, we're back to square one.
Hey, hey, Attorney Marini, where are we with this? Like, what's, what's next for, for Mr. Aruda here?
Yeah, so I've talked to Mr. Aruda. This behavior, I feel, is entirely inappropriate that's going on in this neighborhood. And it's astounding that the prosecutor's office did not back us up. I think it's a serious problem at the state turning the blind eye towards community crime. It's flat out true that, uh, they're not on our side, okay, for these issues. That being said, I've taken a look at we, what we can do from a non-criminal viewpoint, right? And I've talked to Mr. Aruda about this. I have sent a blight violation hitting them for four violations, which would run, uh, per day at, uh, $100 per violation for a total of $400 per day, a continuing lien that could be recorded onto the property until this behavior stops. Now, um, the offender, uh, the accused offender here would have the ability, of course, to make an appeal to a appeals, uh, appeals officer, a neutral appeals officer, um, assigned by the mayor. Um, he has filed this paperwork for an appeal and we're awaiting that assignment and that hearing. I've advised Mr. Aruda that he and his neighbors are more than welcome to be at this hearing, uh, to have an attorney present if they wish, and to present evidence that backs up their point. However, I can say that from, uh, Corporation Counsel's office, I have ample evidence that what's going on in this neighborhood is not normal. This is not a normal, uh, situation where someone is working on their car. This is constant. Mr. Aruda has given me, um, texts, pictures and video every time this happens. I've also advised him each and every time to contact the police to further document what's going on, to create a, uh, a record through the police department, as well as what he is establishing with my office. And all of this evidence is going to be brought to bear, um, that this constitutes a blight violation under our code. And under our code, a violation of the zoning laws, which includes using a property, residential property for a non-residential purpose, is blight. It's a blight upon the neighborhood. It's hurting property values. It is causing, um, harm to the general welfare of this community. It is blight as we define it. And we are going to move aggressively towards holding them accountable for blight and seeking a full, um, a full accountability under the code. Of course, it's going, going to be up to an independent hearing officer that I'm going to have to make a case to, um, to uphold our finding and our violation. And obviously, any member of the public or this, uh, board is more than welcome to attend that appeals hearing when it's scheduled.
Okay, get, I'm not sure, Josh or Attorney Marini or Beth, can you ensure that that meeting or hearing gets circulated? At least to me or, you know, members of the board, you know, I'd like to sit in and listen and, and kind of, uh, you know, provide feedback if needed.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Aruda. Um, sorry about that. And, uh, you kind of buried the lead that you had spoken with the attorney, but, uh, we will, uh, we'll stay on it. And, uh, thank you again for coming tonight.
Well, thank you, Attorney, uh, John Marini, the mayor, uh, but, you know, uh, Dr. Josh, like I said, this is ridiculous. You know what I mean? Just imagine this in your backyard. You, you know what I mean? Uh, I, I can't enjoy family, uh, nothing. It, this is a blown operation, mechanical, they race their cars and stuffs. So like I said, they go up there and a good Friday night, Saturday, Monday, Tuesday, if you leave your meeting, you go up there, probably working on it right now. You know, uh, once again, I can't state how much that, you know, everybody has a right to work on their car, but this is beyond that. Thank you very much.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Yep. Uh, anyone else from the public? Oh, I see one hand. Keith Maynard, next up, uh, name and address for the public record.
Keith Maynard, at Cook Street, Antonia. Um, on behalf of Antonia Pop Warner, I submitted a request for reimbursement for, uh, helmets. Um, I'm not sure if you guys received it or not. If not, you'll be getting it. So I would look for support from the Board of Aldermen and, uh, the reimbursement. Uh, just a quick synopsis, we had to order the helmets. Helmets usually have a 10-year lifespan on the shelf, but yearly they go through a, uh, reconditioning process. And some helmets come back, some helmets don't come back because they failed the reconditioning test, which is done yearly by Pop Warner standards. Um, this year we purchased 30 additional helmets, uh, mostly because of supply and demand, like everything else. Um, so we had the opportunity to get some, um, at a decent rate, not an inflated rate. And, uh, we took that money out of our account to, uh, pay for those helmets. Some are being used and some are actually on the shelf, um, which will be used for next year. So I just asked for the board's support for the reimbursement on, uh, that invoice.
All right, thank you.
Uh, secondly, um, just a quick little thing, there's about 120 kids participating from age five up to 13. Um, you know, we're doing pretty good this year. A lot of injuries, but we're overcome, overcoming them. And lastly, Saturday is our pink game. So what we do for our pink game, we donate all proceeds from the gate, from, uh, T-shirt sales, from raffles, we're raffling off. I think there's a total of four or five, uh, gifts, uh, gift baskets that will be raffling off. And at halftime of the 13 U game, which starts at three o'clock, and I would love to see some, uh, city representation there. We'll do a presentation at halftime to 13 U game, uh, to Seymour Pink, um, in honor of, uh, it's actually one of the, one of the coach's mother-in-laws this year. So we're going to honor her, put the check in her name, um, this year. So again, that's what we're doing up here and I ask for the support.
Thank you. Thank you again.
All right, thank you.
Uh, we have not received that, um, documentation yet, but I'm sure that's coming.
Thank you.
Mr. President, it's Kurt. I received that this morning at 6:30 AM.
Oh, okay. So we have, it is received. All right.
Yep.
Thanks. Um, all right, anyone else from the public who wishes to speak tonight? Anyone else from the public? The third and final calling in from the public wants to speak. Seeing none, we will close the public session and move on to public official session. Mayor Cassetti.
You hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, President George, members of the Board of Aldermen, residents of the great city of Ansonia. We had an excellent turnout for our Harvest Festival. And I want to thank Rich De Carlo and Irene Crom Kirby and the Culture Commission for all their hard work, as well as the Public Works, Police, Fire and Arms. Thank you to all the residents who made the day a success. I was unable to attend as I was attending the wedding of my niece and City Hall employee, Anna Andretta Rodriguez. It is the first time in nine years that I have been there, but I must say, this was a great reason. I wish Anna and Jonathan congratulations on their life together. Saturday, October 29th, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, I will be handing out candy on the steps of City Hall. Baby candy, you ask? Absolutely not. Only the full-size candy for our children here in Ansonia. There are many, there, there may also be a surprise guest that night, so stay tuned and don't say I didn't warn you. There has been a lot of activity with our projects downtown. Staff will update you on the senior center, the garage repairs and the splash pad, which has been installed. The pad itself and equipment will not go in until springtime, otherwise it would need to be winterized. We are waiting on UI for demolition of building number 12 at SHW. Olson Drive project should have its approval shortly and will begin breaking ground in the very near future. I want to thank Sheila O'Malley and my staff for the $6.5 million grant we received from the State of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development. A lot of time and effort and planning and hard work goes into our projects to make them competitive. SHW and Ansonia Copper and Brass are very important. We seem to have found a perfect formula and we continue to secure funding for our projects. Hopefully, we'll have more good news for you shortly. And finally, our Ansonia Chargers are 5-0. And let me tell you about these Chargers. This is a great team. These boys, all these boys, all these members of the Ansonia Chargers football team have been together for 10 years since as, as, um, uh, Keith Maynard mentioned about the Pop Warner. They've been together since Pop Warner, back when they were five, six, seven, right up until, for 10 years they've been together. This coming Friday, October 21st, in Waterbury, they will be playing Holy Cross, another undefeated team at Municipal Stadium. So I want to congratulate Coach Rocket and the Chargers on a great season so far. Hope you can join us and we get one step closer to another state championship, hopefully our 21st, which is a state record. Go Chargers. Thank you and God bless you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, next up, uh, John Marini, Corporation Counsel.
Thanks, Mr. President. Members of the board, um, by way of a quick update, want to let you know negotiations are still underway with our arms unit and also our police officers' union. Um, ongoing negotiations should continue for the rest of the fall, hopefully wrapping up in early winter, uh, mid-winter. I'll likely have a report by, uh, November, December for you. Um, I want to report that we're going out to bid for a senior center director. This has been discussed with our supervisors' units. Um, we've anticipated moving forward with a new job description, um, and an attempt to secure a, uh, fully dedicated senior center director in time for the opening of, of course, our new senior center, uh, which is on track for, um, late this year, early next year. Um, so we're very excited about that. Um, additionally, uh, we have some, uh, items to discuss in executive session and I will take any questions, um, that may be related to anything else we've discussed tonight or, or earlier. I, I do want to let you know we're almost at the stage where the foreclosure on Ansonia Copper and Brass is going to be complete. Uh, the court is going to schedule some hearings to complete the process and then the city will be owner of the Ansonia Copper and Brass facility. Um, I'll continue to update you this fall and early winter on the status of those court hearings and the, uh, property.
Uh, any questions from the Aldermen for Attorney Marini tonight?
Um, yeah, I have, um, one, um, first of all, how you doing, John? And, um, you've done some, uh, good work down there, but, um, I have never seen your hair so on a place, um, it's just throwing me off here.
I, it's.
Good.
And.
And the other.
You don't remember COVID?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And, um, what's, what's really important that, um, that, that, uh, the mayor has, uh, touched on too, is that the Pop Warner program is very vital to the high school program. And, um, that was about all I wanted to say, but your hair just like, just threw me off, John. I just, I lost all thoughts.
I, I like to comment on that.
Sure.
John, I wish I had half your hair. I don't care how messy it would look.
Yeah, at least it's there. At least it's.
God bless you.
Thank you.
This is a very substantive legal update. I'm, I'm very happy.
John, I have a question. So after we gain control of, uh, you know, copper and brass, when it goes through the process, can you just walk us through maybe six months, a year out? What does that look like? Like, you know, how, how quickly do we start moving, you know, once we gain control of the property?
Yeah, it's a good question and a really good point I want to underscore right now. I really want to thank this board for the support to move forward with the purchase of this property. Because the funds that Sheila has been applying for, um, those awards would not be possible without the city ownership of this property. And I want to reiterate that. It was absolutely crucial. The, the, our, our route to ownership allows us to apply for and be awarded this, this serious, serious funding that will help remediate and eventually revitalize this site, starting of course with that access bridge, right? Um, we've, we have been in conversations with the funders, with the state, with the federal government. They cannot fund this project if we do not own the property, but you took by setting this process in motion months and months and months ago. And we're here now today realizing these awards because of the action, um, that your board took. So thank you so much. In terms of what's going to happen once we get ownership, it's going to be that much easier to not only now utilize the funds that we've been awarded, but to apply for further funding. Because as you know, this is a costly project. This is not a project that any one small city or town can handle by itself. Especially not if we want to get the site to its highest and best purpose. Obviously, we're also going to have to talk about securing the site, um, and, uh, pathways to eventually getting this, uh, back to productive use. And whether that's going to be the city owning the property and leasing it, or selling part, portions of the property, um, we're, we're going to have to have a serious discussion and also set up, um, a vehicle for, for those transactions and a way, of course, to fairly determine what is the best end use for, for all portions of that 60 acres. So there's, there's going to be quite a lot of work to do on the site next year. My guess is that is going to be the biggest project that we are going to be actively working on, um, in 2023.
All right. Any other questions for Corporation Counsels tonight from the Aldermen?
Sheila's going to get that same question, I think, though.
Yeah, I was going to ask, Tony, are you asking about next steps?
Yeah, like demo, like, as an example, I know we have like Stanford demo kind of at the ready.
Yeah, we've been really successful in getting, um, state and federal money for both properties. And John's right, in terms of the federal government, they won't give us, uh, money until we own Ansonia Copper and Brass. But the state has, um, granted us several grants, um, without ownership, uh, you know, and they're, and they're counting on us taking titles soon. Um, so you know, the next step for SHW, as you all know, is the demolition of build, of, uh, building 11. We are still waiting for UI. They have designed a plan. They are going to put the plan into action. They're telling me four weeks. So that puts us at the end of October, um, for, for the go-ahead to do the demolition. But, but concurrently, we're talking to SHPO about the, the structural integrity of the other remaining buildings, some which don't even have a wall connecting to other buildings. So what we're hoping is to get approval to take all of the buildings down except for 12, um, while we have the demo contractors out there and mobilized so that we don't have to incur extra expenses. So that's SHW. In the meantime, we have a, we have an application, um, for federal funds for SHW for a road and site pads into that property. We already have, uh, a couple of manufacturers interested in the property. Uh, once we get an access road in there and site pads, we think the whole place will fill up. Um, but I, and I, you know, and I'll come to this board with more information on that as we move along. For Ansonia Copper and Brass, uh, the, the mayor did mention that we got a, um, community investment fund grant for $6.5 million. I guess I stand corrected because that's, yes, $6.5 million for the replacement of, of the bridge into, uh, Ansonia Copper and Brass, which is the safest, uh, best route into the parcel for truck traffic and commerce. So, um, we have that. We also have, uh, funding for the extrusion mill to renovate the extrusion mill on Ansonia Copper and Brass. And what we're doing right now is getting a, an updated estimate on the demolition of all of the structures on, uh, Ansonia Copper and Brass, with the exception of the extrusion mill. So once we have that, um, quantified, we'll be able to secure, uh, the demo, hopefully secure the demolition funds for the remainder of the parcel. So a lot going on, a lot of pools of money, been very fortunate, um, to have secured a, a lot of grant funds and we're going to put them to good use. But the, you know, it's an ongoing process and we're going to chip away at, at this site till we get it all cleared and back to reuse, productive reuse. Um, I think that's my present. Yes, sir.
In Sheila, we trust. Let's get it done.
Thanks, Tony. Appreciate that.
So much trust that she forego, she for, uh, whatever, she skipped the intro.
I did.
She doesn't need any, she doesn't need any intro in this town.
Economic development, yeah. Any other questions for Sheila on economic development issues from the Aldermen? All right. Uh, next up, uh, CFO Kurt Miller.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, good evening to all the board members and others in attendance. I'm going to give two updates tonight, a quick one on the Finance Department and then a quick one on public work. So, uh, just two quick updates for finance. Uh, the fiscal year 24 budget process has begun. I sent out a memo to all department heads with initial information and instructions. I asked all the department budgets to be returned to me by Monday, December 5th at noon. I'll then spend the months of December and January meeting with department heads, reviewing their submissions and discussing any capital needs that they might have. Uh, once I've compiled all that information, uh, I'll sit down with Mayor Cassetti. Uh, and we will go through the process of preparing his budget, uh, submission to, uh, to vote and to the Board of Aldermen. And we anticipate that, uh, presentation to be on Monday, April 3rd. Um, and again, I'm going to push to do what I think is, uh, financially, uh, in the best interest of the city, uh, for its residents by waiting, uh, an extra two months. I think it gives us a much better understanding of, uh, potential expenses, uh, and also revenue, uh, with this being a new, um, legislature that will be coming in, uh, potentially a new governor, uh, potentially new, uh, executive officers. We could see some changes to the budget. I think it's very prudent that we take as much time as we possibly can to make sure that we are truly understanding exactly what we will be receiving and what the expectations on the city are. Uh, the fiscal year 22 audit is ongoing. Uh, we started to provide all the necessary information to our auditors and they've begun some of their testing process. Uh, we're slowly moving forward, uh, as we had anticipated. We're still anticipating completion by the end of December, but I'll have a better idea for you at the November meeting. Um, so I want to see how the first batch of testing goes, uh, before we make any final determination on completion. As for Public Works, I had the chance with, uh, Sean Rowley, who is our Parks and Streets foreman, to attend the CTI snow prep training class. Uh, this training gave us some great insight on preparing for the upcoming snow season. We're currently working through our plan to make sure that we were prepared and ready to go. I have a large staff meeting scheduled for Thursday afternoon. So that's one of the things that I'll be talking about, uh, with the guys to make sure we have everything that we need and we are ready to go. Um, along those lines, excuse me, we'll be contracting out with a weather service, uh, for this snow season to provide the most accurate and specific weather reports possible. Uh, this is something I had when I was in Seymour. I found it to be extremely beneficial. Uh, we'll be getting pinpoint updates, um, leading up to storms and during storms, which I think is a good investment for us to have so we can properly deploy, uh, our men and our equipment to make sure that we're getting the roads uh, cleaned up. As you know, making sure the roads are addressed during any storm, uh, is a very big priority for Mayor Cassetti. And we want to make sure that we are meeting, uh, those expectations. Uh, we're in the process of reviewing different options for GPSing our DPW fleet, excuse me. Uh, these new systems will allow us to have a must, much better understanding of the rolling fleet, uh, which provide us many long-term benefits, not only for maintenance, driver safety and most importantly, residential response. I don't want people to think that we're GPSing the trucks because we want to know where our employees are. That's not the real use of these. Uh, by GPSing the trucks, we can collect a lot of real-time data, um, to make sure that we're properly u- utilizing our equipment. Um, you know, we did a test today, which you could actually have cameras, uh, that are attached to the vehicles. Um, and one of the demonstrations they showed us was that a car pulled in front of a DPW truck on the highway slammed on the brakes. Obviously, the DPW truck slammed into the back of the car. The car pulled over and said the DPW truck ran into that. Uh, they went to court and they were able to pull up the video, clearly showed the car cut in front of them and GM on the brakes and saved the city, you know, thousands of dollars, uh, in potential cost. So again, there's a lot of safety features attached to this. Uh, so it's something that we're working through and trying to determine what the best course of action is. So it's something that we're working through and trying to determine what the best course of action is. Finally, we're in the process of updating all the policies and procedures for the transfer station. I know this is something that this board had asked for a while ago before I came on. So we're taking the time now to go through this. We're gonna update all of the associated costs. And then some of the other things that we do, and we'll be coming back in the month of November with recommendations. Obviously, first we'll go through the DPW board, and then ultimately to this board at your November meeting for final approval. So we're gonna look at, again, not only operations, but cost of residence, available hours, so on and so forth. Would that entertain any questions that any of you may have?
Any questions for CFO Miller tonight from the Alderman? All right, you got off easy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we got Dr. Joe Tabacco, Board of Education Superintendent.
President Schuer, can you hear me?
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to give you a brief update and entertain any questions after. First, I'd like to let everyone know that tomorrow at our Board of Ed meeting, we're going to recognize Officer Joel Perez as our Charger Champion. Officer Perez was the officer who purchased sneakers for that young man at the lemonade stand. Every Board of Ed meeting, we have a Charger Champion, and it just happened to be one of our newest officers. Like to acknowledge Officer Perez. Number two, I wanna say thank you very much, you know, to my Board of Ed and to the Board of Aldermen. Hiring of Chuck's, thank you, and having safety and security in all our buildings has made an absolute and immediate impact from traffic flow, from safety and security. It was a wise step and a great hire with Chuck. He's made all the difference. Parents have commented about traffic flow, and so have residents, so that's always a positive. So we appreciate that. I had the pleasure of speaking with Mayor Cassetti and Sheila O'Malley. We're bringing some global competencies. More is to come on this, but I presented some of the ideas to both the mayor and Sheila. And we are in our infancy when it comes to some of our global partnerships and our global competencies. But it's something exciting, and like I said, more to come. Just giving a little teaser on that one. Also, I just would like to know, let the Board of Aldermen know, in April, the district through Dr. Morales has planned a trip to, for students, juniors, seniors, more juniors than anything, to historical black colleges and universities. So for, during April vacation, our students will go down to, I think it's Georgia and Alabama in five days, see five different schools, but also see historic landmarks as well. And we're offering that for, if you ask me, for the first time, I wanted to set that up, but COVID got interrupted my plans. And lastly, I got to spend the weekend with my family down to Washington DC, and I said hello to our Secretary of Education, who has always been a friend of Ansonia. So it's always nice to know that our Secretary of Education knows that I'm still gonna always ask for stuff, even if it's at a federal level. So I thought you guys should know that as well, too. So if you guys have any questions, I'm more than willing to answer at this time.
Yeah, just more of a comment. I just wanna say that you are doing a fantastic job down there, and we are lucky to have you.
I appreciate that, Chicago. I do.
A second that, Chicago. We're lucky.
All right, any hardball questions for Dr. Joe tonight?
No, you can let me get off early on this one. Easy on this one.
All right. All right, so thank you for coming tonight again. And so ends our public session, or our public official session. And we'll move on to committee reports, Finance Committee.
I can offer you, I'm sorry, Josh. I would like to make a motion to pay all bills if deemed correct.
A second.
Motion by Mamon, second by Rivers, to pay all bills if deemed correct. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries unanimously. Do we have any other committee reports or subcommittee reports from the Alderman this month? There are several reports in the, not in the packet, but included in the packet, but not included on the agenda. Just wanna again acknowledge those that put the, those reports together and the time they spend. The Finance Report, Library Report, the Fire Marshal's Report, several of those things that, just wanna give some props. Arms.
Arms report, yes.
All right, no other reports. We'll move on to municipal reports. We have the boat recommendations that were in your packet.
Make a motion to accept the boat recommendations, Josh.
Motion to accept by Mamon, second by Yaman. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed or abstaining? All right, motion carries. Next up, we got the tax collectors' report. Anybody?
Motion to accept, motion to accept the report.
Second.
Motion to accept by Mamon, second by Tar. All in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, motion carries. And then we have the request for refunds for October twenty-second. The amount is two thousand five hundred and forty and forty-one cents.
Make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Rivers. Who was the second on that?
I was, I was Josh.
Second by Adamowski. All in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we have no, that motion carries, by the way. No accidents and claims. We have no communications. We had one resignation that was in your packet from Kathleen Fisher, resigning from the Opera House Committee.
Motion to accept and send her a letter of thanks for her participation and wish her luck.
Second.
All right, motion by Cassetti and second by Rivers to accept and thank. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Ignition accepted. Let's see. We have no resolutions. Under appointments, you got a short letter from the mayor. There was an amended version that went out October seventh. And it's labeled as star amended at the top. So there are two categories, and I'll just read the nominees and the terms individually. So the first one is for the Commission for Elderly Services. This is a three-year term. Mary Ann Ahern, Democrat, sixteen, Rufus Street, Ansonia, term expiring ten thirty-one twenty-five. This is our reappointment.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion to accept by Cassetti, second by not. All in favor? Any opposed, abstaining? All right, congrats. And then we have two nominees for the Opera House Commission. These are two-year terms. First one, Sharon Vorashak, Republican, of Five Sobin Drive. This is a replacement for the one that just resigned, Kathleen Fisher, term expiring ten thirty-one twenty-four.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion to accept by Cassetti, second by Tar. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, and see, she's on with a heart, so she must be happy. Second nominee for the Opera House Commission, and again, a two-year term. Martha Gabor, Gabora Lot, Gaboriot, Democrat, one eighty-five, Westfield, Bridgeport, Connecticut. Again, expiring ten thirty-one twenty-four.
Second.
Motion by Rivers, second by Tar. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Congrats to Martha as well. And let's see, moving on, we have no ordinance, nothing under ordinance. Under new business, we have one item listed, Two Elm Street, referral to planning and zoning.
Josh, is that the letter that we got?
No.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, is it?
Yeah, I think she's referring to the letter from a Realtor that was looking to sell the property. Yeah.
No, 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 no. This is Two Elm Street. This is the.
Sorry.
The old police station. It says referral to planning and zoning.
No, 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 okay. There's just one from planning and zoning that I can't read. That's why I'm asking if that's what that was.
That was in the wetlands, and I do have a planning and zoning update as well. So. Yes, we wanna refer this to P and Z for eight twenty-four. Correct. Motion by Cassetti.
Second.
Second by River.
Beth, I think we already did that.
I think we did that two meetings ago.
Yeah, there was, there was three or four properties the city was interested in, and that was one of them. I'm sure I'll check tomorrow, though.
All right, I'll check with Jared Heon on the chair and see if that came back. I received something back from him just recently, but that wasn't one of them, so that's possible.
We do need a referral for that, so.
If it's done, I'll report back. I'll report back on it, and if it's not, we'll send it out for the. Let's vote on it.
I'll check tomorrow. Can you vote to refer it just in case?
Vote just in case. We have the motion and the second. Just vote to send it.
I.
I.
So, and then if not, we can just disregard if it's, we already got it out there. All right, under old business, the issue of two eighty-three North Main Street discussion. This actually is the one that was sent for an eight twenty-four last month, and I just got a response back today. I'll read it to you. This is from Planning and Zoning. Dear President Schuer, at the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission held September twenty-sixth twenty twenty-two, a motion was made for a favorable referral referencing the need to keep density down by maintaining open space. Planning and Zoning Commission recommends that the Board of Aldermen formulate some way to prioritize and select what avenues they want to take before purchasing any properties for open space. If you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to contact me. Best regards, Jared Heon. So it sounds like they're recommending that we sort of have a subcommittee that goes through these. Yes. Go ahead. Beth?
What did he say?
No, I didn't. I'm sorry. I didn't intend to.
I thought that was Chicago.
Yeah, it was.
And the email that was included with the letter, he further says, when the commission is in favor of open space, the commissioners wanted to encourage, while the commission is in favor of open space, the commissioners wanted to encourage the BOA to set up some type of procedure to evaluate the feasibility of any proposed purchases or leases. The P and Z doesn't wanna appear against any open spaces, but understands that there are financial and sometimes environmental considerations that have to be taken. And if you wanna discuss further, we can. So I can, I can work with city staff to put up, put together a small subcommittee on that for when these do come up. Or the full board, but we should, we should discuss this at some point.
Do we know what the tax, do we know what the tax revenue on the property is?
I don't, offhand. But let me check.
Looking up.
Yeah. Check on tax revenue. Any other questions?
It's undeveloped raw land.
I know, but if we're looking to take this on, that's something, of course, it does come off the does come off the grand list. We have to ensure it. There's an assortment of other things that come with it, so. Josh, what was the address again?
Two eighty-three.
It's mostly an unusable tract of land, that's why. It's that space would take a lot of money to make it usable.
Right.
Thanks, Dan.
If you're gonna form a subcommittee, since that's in my word, I request to be on it.
Josh, just to clarify, the subcommittee would develop criteria for any piece of property relative to open space or in other concerns.
They're recommending, they're recommending, maybe we do it as a full board, but maybe we have a subcommittee develop the structure. But they encourage the BOA to set up some type of procedure to evaluate the feasibility of any proposed purchases or leases.
Right, not necessarily this property, but.
Yeah, general, yeah. I think generally, we don't have any process, so they're saying we should have one.
Who is the letter from again, Josh?
Jared Heon, the Chair of P and Z.
Okay, so he wants something beyond like the plan of conservation and development that is done with, with planning and zoning? He wants something beyond that for the subcommittee to evaluate?
Yeah, it sounds what it sounds like to me.
I mean.
Who owns it?
Is that coming up?
Because this is something that should be done with Dave Elder. I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt everybody, but
Yes.
Something that should be done with Dave Elder in consultation with the Planning Commission, which is the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then referred to us for input, I would think, based on the eight twenty-four.
Is the land donated? Is that land being donated?
No.
No, this was the one that was offered to us for sale last month. And we sent it, we sent it off, or maybe it was two months ago, when we sent it off for an eight twenty-four referral, just as, you know.
So they're looking to find out what our intent is for this property?
Right.
Correct.
Right. From time to time, you get people that own property and will bring it to the city for purchase, potential purchase. But, you know, that's, it's actually the planning and zoning and land boards that could make recommendations as to whether or not the piece would be useful to us or. Right.
I.
Tony, did you find the taxes on it? Cuz I can't find it.
Yeah, it's about twenty-one hundred dollars a year, and it's titled in John Shushman and Ruth Hessler. Eighty-three.
Yeah, no, I was, I was just gonna say, I mean, that, that's exactly right, Sheila, is that that should be done with input from the Planner and the Planning and Zoning Commission and sent back to us with a positive eight twenty-four or a negative eight twenty-four, saying this isn't in, you know, if it's in line with the plan of conservation and development, and then, you know, urging us to consider the position and the plan when making our decision.
Right.
I, I would agree totally. I think this is the wrong referral.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it should just go to the Ansonia Land Trust.
Josh, this is the piece of property that a Realtor was trying to offer to us a couple of months back.
Yes.
Lisa Crosby from Houlihan Lawrence Realtor.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's trying to make an easy sale. I think we should stay away from it.
Thank you.
She was saying there were maybe endangered bird species living in there or something. If we take over this, we're gonna, it'll be our fourteenth park that we're gonna have to maintain or patrol or do something with, and it's an getaway up the north end for a kid to run through there to escape police custody. I don't think we should be in it at all.
I believe that also.
Absolutely.
Agree.
I agree.
Okay, so we have two, two issues here. We have the issue of two eighty-three North Main Street, which we can, we can make a decision on if you'd like, and then we also should act on the recommendation to sort of set up, you know, at least know what the procedure is in the future. Whether it does go, as Joe said, to the city planner in P and Z, and we're gonna sort of stay out of it. Or, you know, whether we wanna involve ourselves.
Josh, I think it should come to your board with a series of either recommendations or, or denials. You know, I don't, I don't think this board, you know, can understand all of the implications or impacts that the property's gonna have, so, you know.
We don't own it.
It puts our board in the situation where we're reviewing the plan of conservation and development that we didn't help develop to determine if it's in line with that.
Right.
Something that the Planning Board should be doing with, in consultation with the city planner.
Yeah, so I mean, my feeling is we shouldn't, we should.
Our job is to decide if we can pay for it.
There you go. Right.
That's Kirk's job, pay for it.
Let the owner run with it.
Yeah, let them keep it.
Thank you. Exactly. Let them keep.
Our nose out of this one.
So we probably don't need to do anything on the latter. What, what do you wanna do on the, the issue of two eighty-three North Main Street specifically? Do you want, do you wanna vote on this? So we probably don't need to do anything on the latter. What what do you want to do on the the issue of two eighty-three North Main Street specifically? Do you want, do you want to vote on this?
Yes, let's vote.
Okay.
I'd I'd like to get, you know, I mean, if it, do you want to vote on it or do you want to ask for, you know, I mean, I I understand, is there a recommendation as to for its use, though?
No.
No.
I I I'm guessing that's what the plan is, that they're asking us for a subcommittee or some kind of sort of committee, so do we want to give them an opportunity to put something in writing? To tell us what they think it would be best utilized for before we vote?
Yeah, maybe you're you're probably right, Joe, and as I, as our elder P and P alum, I would, I would follow Joe's. Uh lead on that one.
Can I ask you a question? Is, how is that zoned? Is that residential?
I think it's residential.
I would guess where it is, yeah.
So unless unless the city is gonna build houses. You know, which I don't, I don't think we're in the business to do that. You know, I I don't think we're opening a bird sanctuary either with with all the parks, as Bob had said, so. I think it's pretty clear what our direction should be, so can I make a motion to take no action?
Second.
Motion to take no action by Mamon, second by Cassetti. Any further discussion?
Can I just add add one thing? Can we also in taking no action, because I'm off, I I'm okay with that. Can we just make it clear that if P and Z does have input to provide that input and it can be reconsidered another time?
Yeah, sure.
Sure, but the way it's presented now, yeah, we're we're taking the motion to take no action.
Yeah, I I mean, what we, what was presented to us um last month or a couple of months ago was. An offer to buy the property. There was no.
Right.
Exploring what it was gonna be used for or anything. It was just, do you want to buy this property?
No.
All right, so we have a motion in a second to uh take no action tonight. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. Um. That is the end of regular session. We have uh one, two, three, four items listed in executive session.
Motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Motion by Mamon, who was the second on that one?
Cassetti.
Fire up Cassetti in Chicago.
It was Rivers.
Beam us out.
Motion to come out of the executive session.
Second.
Motion by Mamon, second by Rivers, all in favor? All right, in the executive session, we had four items. I'll I'll cover them sequentially. Claims number were were paired together, claims number zero three two zero. Uh nine seven eight and zero three two zero nine seven nine. Um this was property damage, January first. Twenty twenty.
Make a motion to take no action.
Again.
Second.
Motion to take no action by Mamon, second by Tar. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? I'm gonna go opposed on that one. Any abstentions?
One abstention.
One abstention. Uh claim number three, claim number zero seven two two one oh three five.
Can you put Joe back? Joe Yamun.
This is.
He got.
Nolan Manor.
Shouldn't be anywhere else, but here. There's no waiting room. Maybe he bought out.
Anybody?
Yeah, make that motion. Uh to make uh no action.
Second by Mamon, all in favor? Any opposed?
He said the me, oh boy, he said the meeting's locked.
Um.
It's that, that's probably my fault, hold on.
Okay.
Unlock it.
And number four. Two forty-one uh Main Street Settlement Discussion.
No action.
Motion to take no action by Rivers, second by.
Wait, is that the fourth one?
Yes.
No. That was the third one, wasn't it?
No, not.
Yeah. Well, the fourth one was to.
I paired the first two together.
Right, that's the fourth one.
This is the fourth one, two forty-one Main Street Settlement. What was the, what was the, what do you want to do?
No action, um because we need. More information on that, uh correct?
To get more information on it.
Right. Okay.
Information, seeking more information from River, second by Tar. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries, and I want to mention. Uh for anyone that's still here. Uh I should have mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. Rest in peace to uh Randy Carroll, former uh. First Ward Alderman who passed away recently. Should have mentioned that at the beginning of the meeting.
Moment of silence.
Thanks, Joe. All right, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, but first, second by Mamon, all in favor? All right, thank you, well. Oh.
Right, guys.
Wait, 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 hold on, set the next meeting.
Yeah, uh we we sort of adjourned, but just as an announcement, we're gonna set the next meeting for what, November fifteen?
Fifteen.
All right, so say the one week after um. November fifteenth, same time and uh same day, Tuesday, the uh seven PM.
Right.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Yo, thank you. Have a good night.